Good evening. Ms. Johnson, if you could call, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson?
Oh, here, excuse me.
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Magner?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. Shulist?
Here.
Ms. Senyard?
Present.
And Ms. Williams?
Present.
Thank you. We'll call to order the November fifteenth Planning Commission at 7:00 PM. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, it remains today, Cook matters of business. Get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go to approval of the agenda.
May for approval?
Second.
Anderson, Williams? Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
We're going to have trouble with that.
Aye. Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Go to citizens comments?
We have two tonight. The first one is Ms. Leslie Street.
Welcome. One second, Ms. Street, getting him turn that on.
No? Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so, um, I have, y'all all should have two pieces of paper up there with you. Um, this is a, a map right here that shows the topography of the land of three of the situations y'all are going to be looking at tonight on the agenda. The one that is pretty plain and laid out, if you will look in the center of that one, is a farm that will be affected by your decisions tonight on three of the things on the agenda. Three possibly, maybe two. So, I would like for you to take into consideration when y'all think about these developments and their plans that they're going to present tonight, that you remember who all is going to be affected. These are working farms. There's actually two farms that can be affected by it. Um, they are working farms and, you know, you've got to look at it too, that a farmer is protected by the US government. So, if a farmer sprays for pesticides or anything like that on their cornfields, um, you know, it could drift to a subdivision, but we're protected, so you can't really do anything about that. So, y'all have got to take into consideration harm from pesticides and stuff, but you also got to take into consideration harm from what the subdivisions are going to do to the farm. All of these, uh, everything on the agenda tonight is going to flow into that one farm, go under Highway ninety-six and end up in Brush Creek and then the Harpits. So, please keep that in mind too. Whatever happens will end up flowing all the way to the Harpits. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Alfred Hayman?
Hello, Ms. Hayman?
Hello. Excuse me. My name is Alfred Hayman. I live at seventy-three oh one Kempton Court in Aden Woods Phase One. On tonight's original agenda, you would have been considering a residential site plan modification for Aden Woods Phase Three. I don't have any details as to what changes would have been requested by A-one builders. You may be aware that the developer has done some blasting in Phase Three and more is to be done right next to the homes in Aden Woods Phase One in Castleberry. As you eventually make your decision on whatever they request, please consider whether the change will allow the builder to do more blasting than the current site plan would allow for. I would request that any site plan changes that allow for more blasting to be done be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to approval of the amendments from the October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two special meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
McDonald, Anderson? Any discussion on the minutes? I know we made, we had revised this week, so adjustments. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye. Thank you. We will go to new business item one, twenty-twenty-three City of Fairview Municipal Planning Commission schedule.
Uh, as we do every year, uh, we have the schedule for the following year's planning commission that comes before, uh, the planning commission. I don't believe there's anywhere that requires a, an approval of the schedule, but we do like to bring that forward. Uh, if there's anything, any concerns that anybody would have with that to address those. Uh, but if everybody is okay with it, we'll go ahead and get this published probably within the next week or so online and then on the online calendars as well. Uh, we have several developers already starting to look for early next year. So, this will, go ahead and get that calendar out and let them see what, uh, those dates are. Uh, this coming up year, we do have same seven o'clock meetings on the second Tuesday of each month. Uh, we have put on the schedule again for six o'clock work sessions. Similarly to this year, there will be some nights that we do have those, some nights that we don't. But we're going to go ahead and have all of those scheduled just so that they're in the calendar for everybody to know that, uh, could happen. And again, we'll try to keep those at least two weeks, if not a month, out for, uh, when those will be. Uh, I'll get to a little bit on that in a little bit. Uh, one additional thing that we've added this year, uh, we have a staff applicant review. A lot of times you'll get, uh, you'll see our comments and then see if they've gone back and forth a couple of times uh, with a couple of questions of just small items and why they weren't addressed. We have added a date in each month for the applicant, their engineer, developer, whoever to come in. Uh, two days after they receive their comments from staff, we will walk through each of those comments, any questions they have worked through. And that way, we have a face-to-face meeting with each of those people, uh, for each of those projects. Uh, we think that having meetings face-to-face gets a couple of the small issues that a lot of times become big problems out of the way. Uh, we've done that several times this year and thought, go ahead and put that in the calendar. So, that's one difference from the previous calendars, uh, that's there. And then the planning staff review, uh, that's when we have review with Water Authority, Middle Tennessee Electric Gas Company, several other ones as well as the city staff, and we have those quarterly. So, if there's no issues that anybody sees with those, uh, I'll probably wait a day or two. If you see anything that's questionable, let me know. Um, a couple of the dates aren't on set schedule just because of holidays and so forth. We've gone through and kind of adjusted those. But if there's anything anybody sees where it doesn't quite look right, let me know. Uh, otherwise, it'll be going on to the website, like I said, probably end of this week, beginning of next.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion? Do we need to take action on this?
There's no need for action.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff?
This may not matter, but two fourteen is Valentine's Day. I don't have Valentine, but some, some others might. Just thought I'd point that out.
We did see that. Uh, don't know if that's something that we would want to move the meeting for, uh, with that, but if that is something that there'd be a need for a special meeting to have that changed, I think now would be the best time to arrange that. Uh, would there be anything legal-wise we need other than just setting what that meeting would be and advertising at least, uh, three weeks out like we've done this month? Okay. So, if there's any discussion or desire to amend that date uh, off of Valentine's, probably to the twenty-first, at that point it'd be one week later, uh, that can be up to the commission to discuss and let me know.
I just have one quick question. If the final staff comments typically come out, uh, we can just take February for instance. On January twenty-sixth, would any, uh, follow-up comments that the submitter be required to address, would that be included in the planning packet that would then come out that following week?
Uh, the comments from the, like you said, the twenty-sixth, uh, that's kind of our go-no-go day. If there are a couple of small comments that can be addressed, uh, minor modifications, they would be in the packet that you would see then, uh, with that report. If not, that's whenever it would go back to the applicant as, hey, these are some major issues that we're still seeing. Uh, here are the issues we have with either subdivision regulations or zoning, and then it would go back into the following month's, uh, schedule.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any additional questions? We will move to item two, PC Resolution, PC sixty-four dash twenty-two Residential Site Plan Highland Trace Townhomes Project, seventy-one residential units on ten point nine-three acres, map twenty-one, parcels forty-six point oh six and forty-six point oh nine. Current zoning CG Commercial General, property owner Walter C. Totti.
Staff report for PC sixty-four dash twenty-two, the Highland Trace Townhomes Project. SEC Inc. has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for development plan approval of the Highland Trace Townhomes Project and develop as a single-phase development with seventy-one townhomes. The property contains ten point nine-three acres and is zoned CG Commercial General. Project is located at map twenty-one, parcel forty-six point oh six and forty-six point oh nine and is located on Highway ninety-six directly across from the Caspen Hills Apartments. The properties adjacent to this property are zoned RS forty, single-family, and RM eight directly across with Caspen Hills. Uh, the project, property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base zoning bulk and area requirements of the RM eight residential multifamily regulations for use in the CG Commercial General District. Uh, the Highland Trace Town project is proposing ingress egress to the project by means of one access point from Highway ninety-six directly across from Lucy Lane. The roadway network within the subdivision provided fifty feet of right-of-way with two twelve-foot travel lanes. All roadways will provide curb and gutter, five-foot sidewalk grass strips, or sidewalk, sorry, and five-point-five-foot grass strips. The development foot, uh, frontage along ninety-six will be brought up to City of Fairview standards with the addition of curb, gutter, and sidewalk. SEC Inc. was required to submit a traffic study, and that has been reviewed by staff. It was dated August eighth, twenty-twenty-two by Kim Lee Horn. Uh, the city staff makes a positive recommendation for the Highland Trace Townhomes Project, subject to staff comments being met with the conditions of approval for the town, Highland Trace Townhome Project being all remaining staff comments be addressed and approved by staff prior to pre-construction meeting. Plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting, and the approval of the development plan to be valid for three years from the date of planning commission approval. Any modification to the approved plans shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in planning commission reconsideration.
Thank you, sir. We have a representative here. Anyone have anything, anything to add or note?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Ous Ahmed with SEC, uh, eight fifteen Middle Tennessee Boulevard. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Well, I have one. It may not make very much of a difference, but it's, the location is going to be behind the townhomes that's currently income restricted. Will these be income restricted as well?
Are we talking about the lot?
The townhomes that you're building.
It'll be a, a for-sale? Is that a for-sale provision?
Yeah, yeah. They're all going to be for sale. The developer is here if you have any question for the developer too.
Um, I had a couple of questions. So, this is one that we approved, their donation to the city's tree bank back in September, correct? Okay. And then, um, are none of the lots being designated as critical? I saw the designation, but I couldn't find them on any of the lots. So, once the grading's complete.
The grading that's, that's shown on the plan is for the entire site, so there won't be any separate grading. Grading of the site as it's shown in the plans will be what, will be to grade the entire lot, all, the entire development as one, so.
And, um, one of the comments I saw that had not been addressed yet was the typical lot. Seems kind of, there are a lot of comments, a lot of them small, but that one seems like a bigger one. We can't even tell what your typical lot's going to be because it's a single-family residence shown.
So, all the setbacks are designed to meet the city's standards. It's just a typical detail that will need some tweaks to basically comply with the townhomes because it, the, the detail itself, it doesn't reflect the zero lot line in the, in the middle. It shows all the buildings as one, so we just need to modify that to meet the standards. But the site as it's laid, it meets the city's standards.
I thought I maybe read in Article seven about a six-foot privacy fence being required. Can you tell me, are, are those shown in the plans or provided?
The privacy fence between the, the townhomes?
Uh, for, for individual units.
I believe there will be, uh, some, but they will be picked up with the architectural, uh, level of the building permit, but there will be some privacy fences between them.
I think that would just help kind of clean up the development. Does that, is that something then that would fall within your package, or would you require that in the architectural for?
Uh, if it's something the planning commission will want us to do, we can add it as a condition of approval and we can certainly submit that to the staff after that approval.
I, I mean, I would recommend that we, we ask for that personally.
There is a ten-foot, uh, transitional screen, sorry, screen around the development. Uh, I know that there's been some showing of fence with that as well as, uh, the fence uh, not being required if the screening is there. We'll look at that landscape plan, but that could definitely be something that as a condition of approval is added to the, um, the resolution tonight.
Mike, is that, um, something then that would be the intent of that is for the whole development or like individual patios?
It's for the full development. It would be a development buffer that would buffer the project from adjacent residential properties.
Okay, so it's not intended for private?
That's correct.
Enclosures. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or would like to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve?
Motion for approval. Anderson, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Callie? Any additional questions or discussion?
I know we're not voting on the, the zoning aspect of this tonight, but I would like to make mention just for those watching at home and those in the audience that zoning on this property, I think, came up twenty-plus years ago. Um, and it was made commercial general. And I think that's why it's so important that we're working on the zoning regulation overhaul so we can have more specific zoning of properties because as the twenty forty plan states currently, this technically I don't think would fit that. Um, however, it being zoned commercial general, our duty is to make sure that it falls into the subregs. It seems to do that. Unfortunately, though, the zoning is already in place. It's not something we can, we can address at this point. Just a comment to add.
And, um, I'll add, I just feel like we're constantly getting a lot of plans with some major glaring, like, simple first thing you change on a plan. It shouldn't have been through three staff comments with that still on there about this typical lot. That should have been one of the first things done.
Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Nay.
Ms. Williams?
Nay.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye. Thank you, sir. New business, item two, PC Resolution, PC sixty-five dash twenty-two Residential Site Plan Orinshire Subdivision Project, twenty-five residential lots on twenty acres, map twenty-one, parcel sixty-three point oh one. Current zoning R twenty residential, property owner Orinshire Investments.
Staff report, PC sixty-five dash twenty-two. The project is Orinshire Subdivision Project from T-Square Engineering. T-Square Engineering has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for development plan approval of the Orinshire Subdivision Project and will develop a single-phase development with twenty-five single-family homes. The property contains twenty point two acres and is zoned R twenty residential. This project is located at map twenty-one, parcel sixty-three point oh one and is located on Northwest Highway. Uh, the project property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base zoning bulk and area requirements of the RS twenty single-family residential regulations. Uh, the setbacks and development buffers for that would be a front setback of twenty, uh, thirty-five feet, a rear setback of twenty feet, and a side setback of fifteen feet. T-Square Engineering of the Orinshire Project is proposing ingress egress of the project by means of one access point from Northwest Highway. The roadway network within the subdivision provides fifty feet of right-of-way with two twelve-foot travel lanes. All roadways will provide curb and gutter, five-foot sidewalks, and a five-and-a-half-foot in grass strip. Additional pavement and curb and gutter will be provided on the east side of, uh, Northwest Highway along the development frontage. T-Square Engineering was not required to submit a traffic impact study as the trip generation does not meet the requirements set forth in the subdivision regulations. Uh, there is an open space requirement of zero acres based on the zoning with seven point three-nine acres provided. There will be street trees planted forty feet apart per the subdivision regulations. And then, uh, city staff makes a positive recommendation for the Orinshire Subdivision Project, subject to the staff comments being met. Conditions of approval, all remaining staff comments to be addressed and approved by staff prior to pre-construction meeting. Plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting, and approval of development plan should be valid for three years from the date of planning commission approval. With any modification to the approved plan shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in planning commission reconsideration.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Allison Baldwin from T-Square Engineering, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions or discussion?
Did we have a tree variance on this one? Because I saw a tree survey and stuff, but there were no outcome of it.
Required, but the, uh, percent retainage is not required for current code.
Okay.
Any discussion, questions, or motion?
Make a motion, approve PC sixty-five twenty-two?
Second.
Callie? McDonald? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Magner?
Yeah, thank you. Aye.
Item number four, PC Resolution, PC sixty-six dash twenty-two Annexation, Woodwick Phase Two, five point three-eight acres, map twenty-one, parcel fifty-six point zero zero, property owner Candlewood Cove LLC.
Staff report for PC sixty-six dash twenty-two is the Woodwick Phase Two Annexation. Uh, where Nathan McVeigh representing the property of Woodwick Phase Two with written approval by the rightful owner, Candlewood Cove LLC, has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for annexation. Woodwick Phase Two contains five point three-eight acres. This project is located at map twenty-one, parcel fifty-six, which is on Northwest Highway directly across from Elrod Road. The property is directly surrounding this property to the north and east are zoned R twenty residential, and the remaining surrounding property is unincorporated. The plan of services is included in Resolution PC sixty-six dash twenty-two. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion or questions?
A motion, we approve?
Senyard motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Anderson, second. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye. New business number five, PC Resolution, PC sixty-seven dash twenty-two, rezoning Woodwick Phase Two, five point three acres, map twenty-one, parcel fifty-six, property owner Candlewood Cove LLC.
Staff report for PC sixty-seven dash twenty-two is the Woodwick Phase Two rezoning. Nathan McVeigh representing the property of Woodwick Phase Two with written approval from the rightful owner of Candlewood Cove LLC has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for rezoning. Woodwick Phase Two contains five point three-eight acres. The project is located at map twenty-one, parcel fifty-six, which is on Northwest Highway directly across from Elrod Road. The applicant is requesting an RS twenty residential zoning. This parcel is listed as new residential medium neighborhood with a zoning of RS forty or RS twenty in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Letter of intent, rezone from R forty to R twenty. No staff comments, no conditions of approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion, approve PC sixty-seven twenty-two?
Second.
Ally Anderson? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye. We'll move to no bonds and letters of credits. We'll go for reports for discussion information, city planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
There we go. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight with a special welcome to Mayor Anderson. Thank you for being back on Planning Commission. Looking forward to four years, uh, with you up here working with us and thanks for bringing your expertise back to us.
Thank you.
Uh, I know this week we've had a couple of issues with email passwords. We are looking at getting that taken care of with that.
Let me interrupt you real quick on that. So, so, email passwords. I sent something to our, you know, information you don't know. I sent something to our, um, the manager of our email system yesterday because we've had intermittent issues with various people, and the request I sent yesterday is that we reset everyone's. Um, they'll, they may have sent that to me today. I haven't had a chance to get those emails, but once we get those in, all of your emails will be reset and we'll get you that information out so everybody has that same. We've been chasing it every day. Someone calls, someone else calls, someone else calls, and we just couldn't get a solution to it. So, I just asked if they all be reset. So, as soon as we get that, you'll have that information as well. We've, we've also added, uh, sent a request in for a new email, um, for what was Lisa Anderson or L. Anderson will now be Mayor Anderson at the city. So, when we get that information, that will be in addition to the other emails that go out. So, I apologize to interrupt you, but just information you didn't have on the email.
That was taken care of pretty quickly. All right.
Only took two weeks.
Glad I could assist you.
Thanks.
Will that password reset affect our IDT plans access and all that?
It'd be email only.
That will be email only. Going into, uh, IDT Help, I know sometimes we have issues with it. Couple of things we're trying to still figure out how to work with. But if there's anything you have where passwords aren't working or, uh, something's not looking right, there is a, uh, contact us and submit a claim ticket or whatever on their website. If you, uh, do that, just go through, uh, the fairview.idtplans and then there's a tab that says support. Uh, that should help you get into, uh, their support system and they take care of us with any issues we have there. If not, let me know. Uh, we will work with you on that. We don't have any way of resetting those passwords or giving access or anything on their site, but, uh, we can help with whatever we can, at least get.
their site, but we can help with whatever we can, at least getting you in touch with The schedule for Planning Commission, again, if there's anything that you see, let me know for next year's schedule. With that being said, the six o'clock work sessions, again, won't be every month, but I am starting to put together training for next year. Eight hours of training is required for BZA, Planning Commission, commissioners and so forth. So we have met those past several years with our trainings, but getting all of those set up if information we need. I know one thing that we've talked about last week, had a class, it was a really good class on Planning Commission and BZA ethics. That is a class I have to go to every year, working with planning commissions. There's a guy that works with MTAS that we have a lot of our legal help through, getting opinions and so forth. They teach that class. We're going to try to get with him and see if he can come in, probably first quarter, possibly beginning of second quarter, and do that, and probably go ahead and schedule that for every year, every other year, just something to have that checkmark with that, anything new that comes up. Because with that, you have ethics, but you also have new laws that come up annually, and he can go through some of that with us as well and just kind of keep everybody up to date. With that, we have 11 other months of training. If anybody has any ideas of specific Planning Commission needs, I know one thing we want to do with, once we get the zoning, is set out how our zoning works, what is zoning, what the role of Planning Commission is for zoning, for subregs and so forth. So I know that will be a month or two with it, the ethics, and then possibly a procedures training, just to get everybody familiar with what to do, how to do. So I know those are a couple of things we're looking at, but anything else that anybody has, shoot me an email, and we'll try to get those scheduled, whether it's in-house or getting somebody from outside to come in and work with us on that. Last thing I have, and city manager might talk on it, the zoning schedule, were you planning on hitting on any of it?
I'd sent that email out already, so we'll just distribute the information based on that email with that schedule.
Okay, good deal. Y'all have that email. The next thing on that would be November 22nd, which is next week, we should have that draft out for review. And then December 13th, which is our next Planning Commission meeting, there will be a 12 noon to 7:00 PM come and go. So we won't have a standard work session before that, but there will be come and go from noon up until that meeting. Any questions you have with it, we can go over and discuss at that point. So, any other questions for me?
I don't have access to the email, so can I share my personal email with you so I can receive that information?
Everything we do, city-wise, we do through the city email that way. It's secure, but also the way some of our groups are set up, we can't add outside email into those groups, so just keeping all of that together, we have to use that. If you have issues with your city email, let us know, we'll try to work through whatever we can with that. But that way, everything stays clean with those, the @Fairview emails.
I believe it was just after the first of the year, last year, we went to a training that was put on by either Williamson County or the state. I believe you went, I was there. Do you recall that, that training? It was kind of a, what role does the Planning Commission play in city, everything?
Yes.
Do they put it on every year? Do you know?
I don't know if they do every year. There are different trainings they put on every year, and I'm with Tennessee Planning Association now to get those emails, so whenever I see some of those trainings, we'll send those out. Some of them are free to go to, some of them are online and free, some of them do cost, and if they cost, just let us know, and we'll work through what that looks like.
I think that one was fairly inexpensive, but I took a lot away from it, especially being new to the Planning Commission, trying to understand how it fits into the bigger picture. It really gave a lot of good information. So I was just curious, if that was available, it might be something that everyone would be interested in.
Look at your calendar and see if you can remember back to when that was, and I'll try to do the same and see what that training was and get either the same thing or something similar out to everybody.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you, sir. City manager, Ms. Collins?
Yes, I just want to give you a quick update on your email. No, kidding. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn?
Nothing tonight, sir.
City attorney, Mr. Potter? Thank you, sir. We'll go discussion and communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Callie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I'm good, thank you.
Mayor Anderson, welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say I look forward to serving with all of you, and we've got some exciting times ahead. Thank you.
You, Ms. Senyard?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Magnner?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
I just wanted to congratulate the Fairview Titans junior pro football team on winning two Super Bowls, as well as the cheerleaders, the middle age group won their first place in their cheer comp, pretty, pretty big thing. I believe Main Street is running a multi-page news article in the paper next Wednesday on that. If you'd like to check that out, they're going to have pictures and information on it, so that's all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Schulist?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. With nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, thank you.